Good evening, everyone. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, once again. Before we begin our forum, we'd like to take care of some housekeeping items. Please turn off all of your cell phones or put them on vibrate. Do not take photos of the forum or record unless you're on Facebook Live. The point of that is being that we want to listen to the candidates tonight, not be distracted with our phones. This forum is being recorded and it will be published on social media and our Facebook page, the PTA Council Facebook page, and it will be on YouTube as well. We ask that no campaign buttons, t-shirts, material be distributed or worn in here. And if you are wearing a t-shirt and you can cover it up, please do. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for being here tonight. And thank you to the candidates for accepting our invitation. And we'll send well wishes to the candidate who could not join us tonight. Aman Fadama she has a flu. My name is Nafayla Haydar. I'm the PTA Council President for Dearborn Public Schools. And I'd like to first and foremost thank the PTA Council Board for organizing this event and for doing all the hard work that it took to put it together. We'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights for giving us permission to use the League guidelines to conduct this forum. And we are following these guidelines to the best of our ability. We'd also like to thank the Citizen Detroit for providing a guide to sizing up a candidate's speech and what to listen for when politicians speak. And that guide is over at the table on the right, if you'd like a copy of that. We would also like to thank the Office of the Superintendent for allowing us to use this boardroom and Eric Shigfree in the back for recording the forum for us. The PTA Council is a nonpartisan, a national nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in school board elections. The PTA is an advocate for children, families, teachers, and schools. This candidate's forum will provide an excellent opportunity for Dearborn, Dearborn Heights voters to become familiar with the candidates. The PTA does not support a political party or any specific candidate at this table. This is, this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. The views expressed here tonight are the opinions of the individual candidates and not the PTA Council. Key participants of this forum and the moderator are not directly aligned with any of the candidates. The PTA Council has a list of questions to ask the candidates, and we will also be collecting questions from the audience throughout the forum. If you want a postcard, raise your hand. A card will be brought to you and then raise a card again and we will pick up the card. And hopefully we'll have some time to ask questions from the audience. Any questions that are unclear, hostile, or personal attacks will not be asked. Oh, you can turn in the card, but we won't, we won't ask a question. Questions that are similar in nature will be consolidated to ask us to, to allow us to cover as many topics as possible. All candidates will answer the same questions. If you feel that you have a question that was not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate personally after, afterwards. Now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Ghanwa Karkaba. One last note, please refrain from applauding during the forum. Safe applause till the end. You always deserve applause. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for joining us this evening. It's all smiles. This is a great evening for all of us. My name is Ghanwa Karkaba and I will be the moderator for this evening. First of all, we're going to lay down just the ground rules for the forum. We need to be mindful of the time. Do not interrupt any other candidates. We must stay on topic. Do not check phones or texts while we are in session. Answer questions to the best of your ability. We'll start the candidate forum with opening statements. Opening statements are two minutes long and will be in alphabetical order. Closing statements are a minute and a half long and they will be in reverse order. The order of questions and answering them will be rotated. Every candidate will have one minute to answer each question. Candidates, keep your eyes on your timekeeper, Donna Stanley, right over there. You will receive a 30-second warning, a 15-second warning, and then a stop sign. Please stop immediately as you will be interrupted if you continue speaking. We will begin the first questions with the second candidate on the right with your opening statement. And then the second question will begin with the third candidate and so on. So the first question, it's opening statement, two minutes. Introduce yourself, your family, occupation, education, and tell us why you decided to run for the Board of Education.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the PTA for holding the forum. It's a great way to get the word out for school board. And I'd like to also thank all the candidates for running for school board. I know it's very time-consuming and taking away from family. Better?
Yes.
Alright. My name is Billy Aiman. I am currently the Director of Operations for Hype Athletics. I do not have a family, well, not yet. I, my education is, I grew up in Dearborn Public Schools. I went to open school for elementary, Bryant for middle school, Fortson for high school, and then I went to HFCC for some college. Why I decided to run for school board is a great question. I come from a multi-generational family. My, my parents are very involved in the community. I've been involved in the community. I have worked with Hype for close to 18 years now, and I've been involved in the community for over 20. I've been servicing youth this whole, my whole time as basically work. I worked in the district for a few years as a professional with kids with special needs. I've been an active member in my community, working with multiple organizations. I'm basically honored each week to work with kids day in, day out, helping set up programs, budgeting programs for them, mentoring them, and also helping keep them off the streets. School board for me offers a platform to affectuate and reach out to students, larger portions of students and families, and help them further their education. Part of the plan for running for school board was to help change, bring new ideas, fresh faces, and bring something different for the teachers and for the classroom. I believe that the school board and administration has been doing a great job, but I always, always believe there's always room for improvement in anything that we do, and there's always time for change.
Thank you, Mr. Aiman. Next, Mr. Elzagir.
Good evening. I would like also to start with thanking the PTA on this opportunity, for this opportunity. And my name is Khalil Sagir. I'm running for the Dearborn School Board. I'm a father of two young daughters who attend Dearborn Public School at STEM Middle. I'm an educator by profession. I've been working in the field of education for the last 18 years. I'm an education consultant at Wayne Reeser. I'm an active PTA member. Actually, we are a PTA family. And I have a Michigan teaching certificate, a master's degree in education, an education specialist certificate, and I'm a PhD candidate in education and curriculum and instruction. Why am I running for this position? Because I want to serve this community. And this is, this is where I know I could be effective and I could make a difference. And so this is why I'm running. I, I believe I can make a difference in this community, and I hope that the community will give me the honor of being on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elzagir. Ms. Lane?
Thank you. My name is Mary Lane. I'm running for the two-year open seat on the Board of Education, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees. And I ask for your vote on November 2nd, or 6th, 2018. The reason I ask for your vote and I hope that I merit your vote is because I've already served for 18 years on the board. I can contribute past experience and history of an important time in Dearborn when we've gone from a low to a very high in number of students. I've proven by my past election and reelection, and then also by my work on the board and with many, many people over the many years, that I can cooperate with people and work as a team. And I can also challenge our administration, I can challenge other board members, but I can do that in, in a way that's constructive. I've already contributed to making good decisions, and I think that our district and our college is solid now, and that is the proof that I would lay before you. I've been part of the team that expanded Dearborn Schools, and we've done well. I think we have a lot more to, to do. We have a lot of work to do so that every child achieves their best person. But I think that our community supports our schools. Our schools reflect our community. I strongly support public education, and I'm running for those reasons that I've said. I have a master's degree in social work, I have some immigration law training, and I research and work for the last many years in social, social service fields. So I hope you won't forget me on November 6th. I'm the only person running for that seat. So don't forget me November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roxanne McDonald?
Thank you, Ghanwa. First of all, I'd also like to thank the PTA Council. I know how hard the work you do is. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Roxanne McDonald. I graduated from Dearborn High School, and I received two associate degrees from Henry Ford College, Community College at the time. And then I went on to receive my bachelor's in business management from Lawrence Technological University, all with honors. I worked in the hospitality field for more than 20 years, including in management. My husband Chuck is an electrician, and he's been a member of IBW Local 58 for more than 30 years. We have three sons. They all went through Dearborn Public Schools. And the oldest son is a disabled Army veteran. Our youngest son currently serves in the Air Force, and our middle son works in the automotive industry. I am a proven leader. I'm certified with the Michigan Association of School Boards, and I also served on the board as a trustee for the Dearborn Public Schools and Henry Ford College for five years. I also have served on the Board of Directors for Wayne County Association of School Boards, Henry Ford College Board, Henry Ford College Foundation Board, the Dearborn PTA Council Executive Board, and others. And currently I serve on the Board of Directors for both the Goodfellows and the Dearborn Community Fund. I am also a member of the Michigan Military Moms, the American Legion Auxiliary, and I serve on the Henry Ford College Scholarship Committee. I have the knowledge and experience needed to successfully serve in this vital role. While a member of the school board, I had countless hours of professional development in education-related fields. Topics including strategic planning, legislation, data analysis, school law, communications, and others. I believe that all children deserve a strong foundation and an outstanding education. And I wish to continue preparing our students for the rewarding and prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mosad?
Thank you, Ghanwa. And thank you to the PTA as well for this great opportunity. Really appreciate it. My name is Adel Mosad, and I'm honored to be here today. I believe the Board of Education needs an independent voice that reflects the aspirations and voices of parents and taxpayers. I come from an immigrant family. I was raised by a UAW Ford employee who taught me what real hard work really means. I understand the issues that our students face, being one of them, as a product of the schools. And now as a parent of a third grader at Gear Park and an active member of the PTA, I believe that my diverse involvement within Dearborn has allowed me to be, to build strong relationships with our, with our schools and community at large. These opportunities have vastly increased my professional leadership, communication skills, which I believe will make me as a qualified member of the board. I will be the voice of taxpayers. I am a Dearborn business owner. And as a technologist, I love to solve problems, and I know that our district is facing a lot of issues. So I'd like to be part of those solutions. As a first college graduate, I do understand what it means to have a college education. So I've, I have a lot of things to offer for Henry Ford College, and I believe the low enrollment is a huge issue, and that's something that I will be tackling when, once I get elected. Thank you very much.
Ms. Perrelli?
Good evening, everyone. Pardon me, and thank you to the PTA for hosting us this evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Cynthia Perrelli, and I am a lifelong resident of Dearborn. Graduate of Woodworth School, Fortson, Henry Ford College, and Sienna Heights University, but only on their Henry Ford campus school. I didn't leave Dearborn to get my college degree. I was raised in a union household as well, and throughout my life, I've always wanted to give back. And the city's been wonderful, the schools have been great to us, all my siblings, my dad even went to Woodworth and Fortson. So, pardon me, I'm sorry. Anyway, so back in the eighties, I started working for Dearborn Schools and spent about eight years working in the high school, the alternative at school, helped create a magnet school, worked in food services. And then I transferred over to Henry Ford College and worked in the foundation office, registration office. And then I was, chose to be the executive assistant to the president at that time, Dr. Andrew Mazzara. Upon his retirement, a new president came in, and I remained the executive assistant for that president as well. And then I was promoted to manager of the Enrollment Services Department. Now, throughout this 30-plus years, I also, after my nine-to-five job, I would take the, I would be the stenographer for the Board of Education for 13 years. I was at every meeting, I was at expulsion hearings, special meetings, prepare the, all the agenda items, and I would publish the minutes. So I would say that I have, the reason I want to serve on the board is I believe I have the knowledge and the experience to be able to hit the ground running because I do know a lot about both sides of the district.
Thank you so much. Sorry to take you off. Mr. Thorpe?
Hello, I am Jim Thorpe. Thank you for everyone who made it in attendance today and who's going to be watching us online. I have been married for 18 years. I've got two kids here in the district. My daughter's in eighth grade over at Bryant Middle School. My son is in sixth grade over at the STEM Middle School. I am also a product of the Dearborn Schools graduating from Dearborn High before going on to Michigan State to get my degree. I was lucky enough to be elected to the school board in 2016. And though it's only been a couple of years, I've been on the board when we've had to tackle some tough issues. The boundary changes that went into effect this past year, the search for a new college president, and the appointment of a new trustee. And people have asked me, am I going to run again? And why am I going to run again? And the reason why is because I didn't run originally because I thought it would be easy, and it hasn't been. But I feel that what I can do is, being a financial advisor in the city of Dearborn for 20 years, I can bring the financial background that hasn't been on the board previously, just to continue to give a diverse scope of expertise on the board. And through 15, 16 years of doing different events in the district, the Dearborn Education Foundation, the Curriculum Council, the Strategic Planning Committee, things with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the city of Dearborn and the students. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Good afternoon. My name is Afaf Ahmed. I hold a degree and bachelor of arts for Madonna University. I have been practicing journalism since the age of 17 and considered the youngest journalist in the United Arab Emirates while attending my senior year of high school and being hired after six months at a, at a well-known news outlet. I moved to Dearborn with my family in August of 1999 and attended the Henry Ford College Community that fall. I am a longtime Dearborn resident with two daughters who were products of Dearborn Schools. I'm a passionate activist and committee, and committee for the community and education. I have received civil leadership and outstanding activist awards for working with community members on issues such as women empowerment and children rights. I am the recipient of the first-place award for an investigative report in the UAE about the importance of the relationship between parents' education and students in 1998. Also, I received a special tribute from State Representative Rose Robinson in 2015 for using the power of press to tell the stories of immigrant and minority communities and giving the voice of the voiceless and much more, and also contributing to the history of journalism in the state of Michigan and United States of America. I'm running for school board in Dearborn because I want to work to improve the quality of education for students and parents. My priorities are student safety, quality of education, and equity in curriculum and resources among all of DPS students. One of my concerns is the overcrowding at the high school level, and our special needs students and gifted and talented students are overlooked and underserved. The Dearborn population continues to grow, and we need to find long-term solutions to serve our students. I'm also concerned about readiness in our district. Yes, I realize that our graduation rates are very high, but the question, the overall readiness of our students when they get to college and how many remedial classes are necessary for them to take. I would also like to address present involvement in our district, parent involvement in our district, and what we are doing to improve the relationship between parents and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin the first question of the evening, and they are one minute. You can only speak for one minute. First question is, the school board responsibilities include approving curriculum and academic policies, as well as setting budget priorities for the district. Can you share what kind of research you have done or plan to do to get informed about best practices for schools? And what are specific policies you would like to see implemented in Dearborn Public Schools to improve school quality and school safety? First question will go for Mr. Elzagir.
Okay. Well, in my, in my education and my research, for my masters, for my educational specialist and for my doctor, my work was focused on language development and second language development. And so we have in our district a large percentage of students who are second language learners and English learners who are in a position that, that is a challenging for our districts how, especially when we look at our MSTOP results right now, and we see that ELA proficiency in our districts is in certain schools, and the gap between, between schools is widening. So we have, we have a big challenge when it comes to working with these EL students and developing proficiency. And I believe that we need to, to...
Ms. Lane?
Okay, so this question has three parts, which I want to address all three, and I'll try to do that quickly. What research have I done? I am, I'm a researcher of history, and I'm writing a small book on that. I've written some other articles. But as to schools, I'm a voracious reader. I read all the time, and I read on a lot of listservs about trends across the country, developments across Michigan in education. I also visit schools, not only here in Dearborn, but other places as well. I happen to be related to, my family was a family in education. I talk to professionals. So I, I research my questions pretty extensively. As far as improving school quality, I think that we need to stay with curriculums that work. We cannot jump around and change curriculums. I am really sorry that the state jumps around and has insisted on us having different tests. So that, it's really detrimental. I'm out of time, so I can't address the others. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald?
I also do a lot of reading and a lot of research online and books and periodicals and things related to education. As far as equality and safety goes in our school, I think the main thing that we have to keep in mind is you have to maintain effective security without compromising the warm and welcoming atmosphere and environment that our students get from our schools. They deserve that. You don't want them walking into a school feeling that it's not warm for them, it's not a good place conducive to learning. We have a really strong relationship with the police. I think that's wonderful, and it really helps us. And we have the resource officers, which are highly trained. I think they add to the culture of the school by building relationships. I think some of the things that we need to look at is maybe explore new technologies, magnetic doorsteps, panic buttons, live feed cameras, that kind of thing. The one thing we have to do is be proactive and always continually assess what we're doing for its effectiveness.
Thank you. Mr. Mosad?
Thank you very much, Ghanwa. I've attended many board meetings. I was also part of the strategic planning for the district. That was two years ago, and we laid down a great foundation for the district, and I'm glad that the administration has taken that wholeheartedly. I, as far as the issues and policies, I would like to review all the programs that we have running and have transparent way of displaying their effectiveness, giving them scores, and have a dashboard that shows how effective they are. And base funding based on that, based on their effectiveness. As a technologist, I'd like to utilize technology to its fullest, obviously insecurity and making sure that our students are safe. Reviewing our current protocols and guidelines are actually outdated for student safety, and those need to be updated immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perrelli?
Yes, I also have been involved in the strategic planning process for P-12 as well as college, ongoing years, not, not just one time, I mean, every time we renewed it. So I, and as far as research, I do compare comparable districts to see what they are doing or what kind of curriculum they use. But the state mandates regarding curriculum has got to remain consistent, and, I mean, testing, it's, it's getting out of hand. And I know that regarding school safety, it's pretty scary what's happening today in the world, and my understanding is that the superintendent is looking at the current protocol for safety and working towards something that perhaps would make everyone feel a lot better because our students need safe buildings and, oh, thank you.
Mr. Thorpe?
As I stated, I was on the Curriculum Council for three years, so I had a chance to see how that works when they're deciding the curriculum to be used. And I agree that we need to have the state stop shifting from year to year what they want us to be teaching to the kids. I also decided to go out to the schools two years ago to find out about testing. Everyone tells you that you get tested to death, and the district has started working on trying to reduce the amount of testing that they give to some of the kids. Yeah, with the SmartBond a couple of years ago, we started installing different safety features to the schools. We're also starting to add additional cameras to the buildings. We've got the resource officers in there, but I am definitely not in favor of having people carrying weapons in the buildings unless they're not part of the police or any other, other forces that need to come on campuses.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Yeah, once I, if I get elected...
Yeah, once I, if I get elected, I'll make sure to take classes or courses that will help me to understand better how does it work, the school board, and be, and be familiar, familiar with the policies to serve better. In regards to school quality and school safety, um, we need more improvement in school safety, we need trained staff, we need people to monitor the visitors when they're coming inside the schools, qualified staff for that, and not just to stick to the secretary or, and the other people who are not well-trained for that. In regard to school quality, I believe that the students are, yes, been over, uh, testing, and the teachers, the students are all being stressed, we need to reduce it down so they can have time and chance to learn and provide enough resources for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Aiman?
Um, well, as part of my job as the Director of Operations for Hype, I work with many different school districts, uh, so I'm always asking questions, and I'm always reading up on different budgets, uh, that go on through the school system and, uh, state websites as far as testing. Uh, when it comes to safety and security of our children, it's non-negotiable. Uh, children should be in school and be focused on learning, and teachers should be focused on teaching, and our teachers, um, need that safety and to know that they're being protected at all costs. Uh, healthy and productive learning environment, uh, should be our top priority. Um, when it comes to safety in the school, the current administration is doing a great job, um, but I believe that, uh, school safety is something that requires a constant and periodic review and testing, so our children shouldn't feel like they're in a prison, but they should be protected like they're in a bank.
Thank you. Second question, in your opinion, what are the district's greatest needs right now? How do you think these needs should be addressed? We'll start the line of questioning with Ms. Lane.
So, uh, our district and our college, colleges' biggest needs are, uh, the same, and that is money. Uh, the state has, uh, pulled back from funding education, it's shifted money around, uh, and in Dearborn, we have, we're living off a pretty good amount because our taxpayers, um, voted for millages for us, but, uh, every year we lose ba- because of pension, because of cost of living increases. So we need to stay on budget and we need to stay on course with what our plans are. That's one, that's our biggest need, but besides that, we have an infrastructure committee that's addressing a list of a hundred and sixty million dollars in infrastructure needs. I will take the recommendations of the committee when they bring those forward. So that's, that's clearly the biggest need for our district.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Um, we're on the same page. Again, school funding, as, uh, Trustee Lane said, uh, it's always been inadequate and unstable, and the state seems to, I've, I've been here, when they cut millions of dollars right in the middle of the school year, when budgets have already been set and money has already been spent, and that just throws everything in a turmoil, it's, it's impossible. And they tend to give with one hand and take away with the other hand, it kind of turns into a show game, and change funding requirements in the middle of the year. One simple solution that they haven't done yet to address this is just align the budgets, because right now, the, um, school budget has to come like several months before the state even puts out their budget. And unfortunately, I don't see this coming into play, but it makes all the difference in the world, and obviously, that's a simple solution. Um, as far as, oh, infrastructure was also another one, like, uh, Trust, uh, Trustee Lane said, that there is a committee working on it, our buildings are old and they need a lot of work, they were well-built, but they need maintaining.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moser?
So, the greatest needs, we can talk about infrastructure, and we could talk about the needs, uh, for great buildings and su- safety, but I, I'm more concerned about how our students, are they getting the best education possible in Dearborn schools? And that means we are retaining the best teachers that we can ever have, and that's something lately hasn't been happening. We have teachers who are leaving the districts for others. We have to stay competitive, um, and in order for that to happen, we have to create an environment where the teachers are being supported. Um, I, I do agree as well that we do have aging buildings, Salina is turning a hundred years this year, um, and some other buildings are as well aging, but do we have other creative ideas than just relying on state aid? Obviously, most of the money come from the state aides and taxpayers, but can we forge any business relationships that we can bring more money to our district? That's my question and my challenge.
Thank you. Ms. Pirelli?
Um, of course, money is always an issue because of the state and also the property tax that Dearborn gets is a lot less than other districts. Um, I do believe the biggest issue right now is the infrastructure, and whether or not it can be paid through a millage or a bond, I, I would support it, I, but again, I would wait for the recommendations of the committee. And then the other thing I would suggest, or I, I've noticed, just from working at the college for thirty years, is that a lot of the students are not college-ready. Um, I think sixty-five percent of the classes at the college are developmental, students have to take those classes in order to take a college-level course. So I think that that's something that we can look, I know they're working, they have college one-on-one classes in the high school and that sort of thing, but I think that's something that really needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Mr. Thorpe?
For years and years, you would talk to high school students, and it was always, "What are you gonna do after you graduate high school? Where are you going to college?" Uh, and I think we have not done a good job serving the students that way, because you don't need to get a four-year degree in order to have a good, uh, life and be able to provide for a family. Uh, so I think that the district needs to be looking more and, and making sure that the kids, when they're early in their high school years, even middle school years, um, get the education they need for the careers that they're gonna want, uh, and be able to complement that again with what we have over at the college, whether the college is gonna be giving them just two years before they go on to the four-year degree, or the, the training they need so they can get a good profession.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Um, I believe there's two major issues, the first issue is the school safety, and we need to improve it, which I mentioned, uh, a while ago. The second issue is the overcrowded high school, we need to find a solution, a long-term solution. Since Dearborn, it's growing, we have many students are attending schools, and yet, we have this major issue, so we need to have a long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aiman?
So I believe that, uh, uh, some of the greatest needs right now in our district is one curriculum. Um, I believe we need to bring in a, probably a stronger curriculum to have our kids ready for that next level when it comes to being for college readiness. And also is, uh, an epidemic that's actually, uh, right in our backyard is, is, uh, the substance abuse epidemic that's going on right now in our community. Um, I believe that, uh, children need to fight against this every day, and it starts in the schools, it starts with our staff, it starts with our counselors, and it's a, uh, a big problem for us because our kids are getting hooked on these drugs, and there's nobody to help them, there's nobody for them, there's nowhere for them to turn. If our counselors and teachers aren't there for them, then if we lose one, we're basically losing all. So that's, that's, that would be part of my focus, um, and I think those, those are very important to be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Elziger?
Um, uh, yes, I, I agree also that, uh, underfunding is, is a big issue. I was, uh, a member of the, if, a strategic, uh, school funding, uh, committee, uh, and then it recommended, uh, recommended about nine thousand five hundred dollars per, per student, and we're, which is way above, uh, what we have, uh, right now, about seven, seven thousand five hundred. So we are underfunding the, the education, we are taking away, uh, money for, for many years from education. Uh, but in, in addition to funding and, and financial, we, we also need to look at, uh, at, uh, curriculum and instruction, we need to look at, at, uh, college and career readiness, uh, and this is a, this is a major issue. Uh, the, the latest, uh, SAT scores show that, uh, eighty to ninety percent of our students are not, uh, are not college and career-ready, and we need to, we need to do something about this. Um, uh, in addition, that, the, the, the infrastructure also, we need to do that.
Thank you. Starting in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, uh, state law will require all schools in Michigan to hold back third graders who are not reading at grade level. What role do you think the school board can play in preparing families and educators for the implementation of this policy? We'll start with Ms. McDonald.
Well, um, there's several things, I think that, uh, Dearborn does better than most districts in a lot of areas, and we've already implemented the, um, contract with parents, which I think is a good place to start. If a student is doing poorly, then the con, uh, the contract makes the parent aware and gives them particular, um, tools to do to help that student. We also need to have interventions in place, and, uh, like, like the graduation specialists we have, we can have interventualist, interventionalist in place early for the students, um, that need some help, and we can identify them early. So part of that is having the, uh, my, um, learning plan, which we do have implemented in the, in the schools, and that, uh, looks at each student and their individual needs, where they're succeeding, where they're struggling, and it helps them develop and get engaged in their own education, know where they need to improve, and helps set a plan for themselves. So I think those are things, and work with parents to help them help their students.
Thank you. Mr. Moser?
Um, first, we need to have universal preschool, it, it's, it's about time, and as a father of a child who was late in speech, I do appreciate the district's help that we received, that we were able to enroll our son into preschool, um, uh, although he was not eligible at the time. So, but, uh, that, that extra help helped him read at first grade level and then at second grade level. But what also helped is those grants that we do apply for and do receive after-school help in some, in, in schools. Um, so as a board member, I will push, be pushing for, uh, those grants to be, be sought for. Um, the, the other thing is that we have a large, um, ELO families, and some students who come from other countries from the first year. So, uh, we have to have, uh, a strong bilingual program where we're bringing these students, uh, on track and to be able to read on time. Thank you.
I think first of all, I would identify what students are in fact not reading by the time they're in the third grade, and, uh, build some sort of, uh, program or support to help tho- that, those students specifically, um, at an earlier, identify, like Rob Sand said, identify them earlier. And then again, I think it's important that parents, um, are communicated with as far as helping their student, maybe giving them the tools to help their students, and, um, hopefully that would, that would help. Thank you.
Mr. Gray? The district has been paying close attention to this ever since these kids came into the buildings. Uh, we have used some of the money from the Wayne, uh, Risa Millage, uh, to hire additional early childhood professionals that can work with the kids. Uh, one of the big things we're going against, though, is that there's a stigma, a lot of people think once their child is five, they're definitely ready for kindergarten, they are not taking advantage of the Young Five programs that we've got, the, the GSRP programs that we offer. Uh, so we need to go back societally and make sure people understand it's okay if your five-year-old is not in kindergarten, everyone progresses at their own pace.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
I'm gonna share a story, back in January two thousand nine, when I got married again and moved to North Carolina, my older daughter, she was seven years old, she went to a North Carolina Raleigh School, and there, and within four months, they were going to fail her because the curriculum education in North Carolina were way stronger than Dearborn. I had to have my children to read, I had her to read, read, and read, to continue reading for her to pass the classes. So what I'm trying to say is that the family, we have an issue with a lack of, a relationship between the parents and the school system. We need to bring them together, we need to open the schools after hours to bring those families, to give classes to weak children, and to teach them if they have issues with language and school system, especially from those who are coming from overseas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aiman?
Um, so when it comes to literacy program, according to the M-Steps, we're at a, uh, forty-seven percent proficient in English. Um, I believe that we need to, uh, focus on literacy programs, uh, literacy programs that we can, uh, purchase curriculums. Um, through my job at Hype, we have a, uh, reading recovery program where we've seen kids go through these steps, kids who walk in at a first-grade reading level, by the time they're done with this program are walking out at a third and fourth grade level, uh, at the le- and it's at the level they should be. So we need to focus on these literacy programs, we need to focus on our students, um, going back to what, uh, Jim said, the Young Fives program is a great program to start these kids out with, it gets them going early before they get into kindergarten, uh, they start out with, you know, the basics, and by the time they get to kindergarten, they're starting to read a little bit more, so by the time they get to third grade, they'll be at the level that they're supposed to be, and also, like Ada said, the ELL students, we need to have a more fo- a bigger focus on them and helping them out with, with their reading in their, their English education.
Thank you. Mr. Elziger?
Yes, this is, uh, this is one issue that I think Dearborn Public School need to put more effort into it. Based on the two thousand eighteen M-Step results, uh, third graders, uh, and in our schools, there is a huge gap between, uh, buildings, between buildings in, in the districts and elementary. And we have one school, for example, whose, uh, third graders, uh, we, third graders' ELA proficiency is at, uh, non-proficient, uh, over fifty percent, whereas in another school, six percent. So huge gap in, in ELA proficiency between, uh, buildings in our districts, and we need to close this gap, we need to do something, whether it's ELA interventionist, or, or, uh, doing more in preschool and GSRP, um, uh, we need to have smaller classrooms in these schools, and we need to focus on those, uh, uh, EL students who are coming from different countries and they are not proficient in the language and they need more help.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
Reading at level is a, is a huge concern, and Dearborn schools have done a lot to try to address this, um, and, but my first question is, how is the state going to measure this? Uh, we don't know that right now, uh, at the Board of Education, we've already had ongoing discussions with our superintendent. We've been trying to communicate this to parents, and this is something that we have to really get out the word on. Um, we need parents to know now that it will be something that will be in effect, so that people can start, uh, working with their children. I believe parents play a very important role in preparing their children to be school-ready, and I want to emphasize that. In addition, we also need to examine whether our district can have a waiver. We cannot expect an ELL to come in and be reading, i- if they're coming in with no English and read at level as the same as children who grew up with English. There are a lot of other things that I would recommend, retesting, waivers, summer school, uh, but it's a big, it's a big problem.
Thank you. Thank you so much.